Now we're out of executive session. Um, coming out of executive session at seven twenty-three. Um, and I would look for a motion to uh. Our normal motion coming out of executive session.
I'll make a motion that we follow our attorneys. Um, recommendations.
Tigger.
Great, thanks you too. Um, any further discussion? Um, all those in favor then, so signify by raising your hand and or saying aye. And that is the five of us. Great, thanks. Um.
And I'll be back in one second. You guys should continue. I I I just have to, what, I'm freezing down here. I need to put on something warmer.
Okay.
So honestly, so right back.
Um, okay, so that was uh, that was executive session number three. Agenda item number three and agenda item number four. Um, so now we are moving on to um, the meat of the of the business and most of this I am going to turn over to Glenn, but there's gonna be times when I wanna sort of jump in Glenn and 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 maybe s- uh, not steer the discussion, but frame it. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to you Glenn to uh, to discuss agenda items um, five A through as far as we get.
Ty, can you give me the mute button so that if when Matt wants to jump in, I can? Um. So uh, in our work on updating and modifying the zoning regulations, there are several things that we've worked on that are um, ready for the commission to move ahead on. Um, I'd like to recommend for the commission's consideration that we have a public informational meeting to get community feedback before we actually get into a public hearing on adoption. Um, I think if the commission is comfortable doing so, our meeting in April or meeting date in April or another date in April could work for that. Um, I think the regulations which are currently ready to proceed for uh, further discussion. Or changes to the parking regulations, the modifications uh, language we added with regard to senior living, um, provisions related to reasonable accommodations. Um, and there's also terminology relative to shopping center, which we found in the parking section, which also appears in the signage section, and that terminology really doesn't uh, apply to Kent in that way. Um, so those would be the regulatory changes that uh, would be ready, I think, for discussion in April. So I think we can we can hold that thought, if you will, and make that decision for the end of the meeting and then Ty and I can figure out arrangements for that. If it's a same night, separate night, whatever else the commission's uh, thought process might be on that. But does that sound like a reasonable next step to the commission? Okay, see nodding heads, so I think uh, yep, we'll go with that.
Yeah, it does to me.
Do we need a motion for that?
I'm sorry, what was that Wes?
Do we need a motion for that?
I think at the end, it would, there may be other things we'll talk about tonight that we think might be ready for discussion at that meeting and so uh, that might uh, dictate what we might decide to do in terms of schedule, et cetera. So I'd say let's hold that till to uh, make that item five F, if you will.
Perfect.
Or or I should say, we're not actually gonna add something new to the agenda. We're gonna go back to five A to uh, to address that. Um, there are three, four other issues that we're working on. Um, I think the subdivision regulations are bigger and more complicated, gonna take more time. And so I think the suggestion here for the commission's consideration is that we park the subdivision regulations until we're through with most of the zoning related issues. Um, and then uh, come back to the subdivision regulations. We're not under any uh, time pressure statutory deadline with regard to the subdivision regulation. So I think it will distract us from the other stuff. Um, so my suggestion or 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 guidance, if you will, for the commission is just to park that for now, um, and we'll come back to that April, May, or whenever uh, we're ready to to do so. Um, how, was, yep, see some nodding heads on that? Is that something like a reasonable approach?
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Good. So that uh, that puts us forty percent of the way through the agenda. Um, the remaining items here, there are three of them. We can take them in any order the commission might like. Um, see if the commission has any additional direction on uh, camps and special events. Um, and then there's two topics to tee up for discussion. Um, commission asked me to take a look at housing in the village residential district. And we can have a preliminary discussion on that based on the materials are prepared for the commission's review. And then also conservation development in the village residential. I put together based on our prior conversation, a comparison sheet that that puts the two regulations next to each other. Um, and we can take a look at that language and uh, make whatever changes or edits the commission feels is appropriate. Um, commission have any thoughts on where do you like to go first?
Are are we not doing five A? We not going over the parking senior living accommodations and shopping center terminology?
I think we did that last month, Adam, and agreed that those, my notes indicate ready on on all of those in terms of the next step of going to public informational meeting. So I thought I, we had reached consensus on the commission that these were ready to share with the community, so. I thought the last meeting I-
It's on the agenda, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, we we did speak of that, Adam, while you were uh, getting, getting your sweater on and we somewhat agree that they were ready to go.
Okay.
Uh, we haven't moved, we haven't, we haven't made a motion yet though, so which, you know, Glenn suggested we, we circle back and make a motion on those towards the uh, towards the end of the meeting.
Okay.
So in terms of the item camp, special events, housing in the village residential or conservation development, uh, does commission have any preference? Um. What they'd like to talk about first?
I think we should start with the camps. I think that uh, I I think that we've had uh, a few conversations about it, um, and about how we should proceed. Um, and we, you know, we, we were originally talking about several different ways of of, and the idea was to bring club getaway into a conforming use, into it, in into a um, into use, a a use that's permitted by the regulations. Um, so we explored with with the help of of, you know, outside people telling us what they thought we should do and then inside people telling us, you know, helping us make make our decisions. Um, and then at our last meeting or maybe the meeting before, um, Glenn came up with this idea of 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 having a special permit for the camp. So having all of the camps um, under a definition. Um, and then having each of the camps operate under a special permit, which I thought resolved some of Wes's um, unease with um, having an overlay zone or or having this use being permitted um, all over um, with somewhat by right. So it's, this this seemed to work out okay for me. Um, but I might, I I I might suggest that um, I might suggest that instead of having us go from a camp as as a defined directly to a temporary um, special permit, that maybe we could have an interim where each of the camps um, had a, you know, it's somewhat of a permanent temporary, I'm I'm sorry, a permanent special permit that allowed them to do what they are doing um, at the time that they come to the commission and say, we want a special permit. We wanna come within, within compliance with the regulations, or we don't wanna be pre-existing non-conforming anymore. Um, this is what we do and we'd like a special permit for these things that we're doing. And then anything that they wanna do that's that's different or ex- uh, an evolution or an expansion to that, um, that would come as a as an annual special permit. Um, that could, some of those uses could eventually move into the more permanent special permit. If those new things that they wanted to do, they would, they did for a year or two or three and we found that the impact of the community was was low and everybody seemed to be happy with them, then we could sort of morph that back into their, their, their permanent um, special permit. So that's, I I, to to me, that seems like it did, it drags. It it satisfies Wes's concerns and it seems to, it seems to me that it might satisfy the um, club getaways concerns. Um. So does that sound like it could be something that we could do, Glenn?
I think if I, let me try to paraphrase Matt so that I know how to craft what I think the commission's guidance is. So we have, we have camps uh, in, and today, mostly in the RU one district. Um, those camps have been in existence for many years. Um, and we might create two categories of camp. And is, we haven't used this term, so I've just thrown these out to guide our discussion here today. These two groups or types might be, let's call one pre-existing camp. And then the second one is approved camp. So all of the camps in town are, let's say, conforming in some way, shape or others, they they have um, the benefit of predating zoning in some situations in Kent. Um, but the opportunity or situation could be to become an approved camp. You now have the ability to register, shall we call them, activities, et cetera, and get special status that those activities are recognized by the commission and permitted to continue. Now there could be a third category, which is sort of where this regulation started to go, which was this concept of uh, special events accessory to a camp. Now it can be a third category. And this regulation was set up is that, A, the camp had to, if, let me just apologize, the text is small. Let me just blow this up. So this language here, under part one here, was precedent to camp special events, the camp had to receive a special permit. So that's where a camp would go perhaps, as you described, from a pre-existing camp to now an approved camp. And this establishes what I said here on the sidebar, is a baseline of activities. Yes, we recognize that you have traditionally done, you know, swimming classes, water sports or other camp type activities or or other things that uh, again, depending on the nature of the camp have gone on. And we can move stuff into that category as the commission modifies the special permit, et cetera, over time. And then we might leave this section, which I've shown here, sixty-six forty intact. Which is, if it's not part of an approved camp, you would have to come back for an annual approval for camp special events.
And in order to come back, and it was just to, just to be clear, in order to come back for that special permit for camp special event, you have to be, you have to have that underlying special permit, right?
That was my understanding of what you were saying earlier, Matt.
I I that, that's, that's what I think. I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page. And we might wanna take a break there and and see whether that makes sense to the balance of the commission before we go too much further.
Sure.
I have a question. It just, it, I I'm not against this at all. I I I'm just looking at, we're, we're creating a, we're trying to bring club getaway into compliance for them and for us. Um, and we're creating a, changing a regulation, creating a regulation that now encompasses all of the camps, all of our town. And I guess I'm just, I don't know what happened to the idea of creating an overlay zone that that sat on top of club getaway. Uh, you know, we had talked about that. It was something that that his attorney had, had brought up and and said that was a possibility. And we discussed it and then it seemed to disappear and and the advantage to an overlay zone is that it didn't get into the rest of the camps. It didn't get into the rest of everything else and open up the possibilities that we can't imagine coming back before us. So I I'm just, I I don't, I don't know, because it all of a sudden just disappeared and I I don't know why it just disappeared.
Seems to me that what this does is it uh, um, it it allows for the other camps um, who are um, uh, maybe pre-existing non-conforming to, for a mechanism for them to come into conformity as well. So it's 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 more of a, it's more of a broad reaching, not just get club getaway into into compliance with the regulations, but to allow the other camps to um, and then maybe even a new camp that 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 comes in, that that allows us um, the flexibility.
But the other camp that's here, they are con, they are conforming and they fall within our camp regulations. There's nothing, and they're not asking for us to change anything. And if another camp, another summer camp wanted to come here, we had regulations that allowed that. Now we're taking what they had, now we're saying, well, here are all these other things that you can do. And and maybe that's what we wanted to do, but that isn't what we started at doing. What we started doing was trying to take this one camp that's different than everything else and bring them into conformity so that they can move forward with their operations. Because right now they can't really change anything because they're non-conforming.
So you would rather see uh, you would rather see an overlay zone for for club getaway and leave everything, everything else as it is?
I am fearful of what happens when we create a regulation that affects everything in town. When there isn't, and when we haven't been asked to do that, nobody's requested us to do that. And and the other camp and, I I think there's just one other camp. They're not non-conforming. They're conforming. There's a regulation that they fall within because they're a summer camp for kids. And they fall within that regulation.
And I'm not sure that I agree, but that's, but that's fine. Let's, you know, maybe, maybe we can hear um, I I really, the the the, the point for me of this discussion is so we is is to just to provide Glenn some, some direction on where we think we want him to go, because we, as you said, Adam, we we we, we have been looking at a bunch of different things. And then we started going down this road. We just wanna make sure that that Glenn has the direction from us, so we're not spinning his wheels and we're not getting something that we don't want, so.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up now. I don't remember, I remember that we started talking about this last time. We never, we just kinda stopped the discussion of of the overlay zone. My record disappeared. I don't remember that ever coming to an end. I don't ever remember discussion by the commission saying, you know what? We don't wanna do that. We wanna do this.
And that's what we wanna do tonight. I don't mean, it was that, that's, that's what we wanted to, we, like I said, we want to point Glenn in the right direction. We wanna give him a little shove on the back, so that he's going down happily, understanding that he's doing a job that uh, that is gonna reach some conclusion that that we all like. So what's, what, which direction do we want him to go in?
So for me, of course, to reinforce what Adam was saying, my concern was the proliferation of camps. So to isolate this to club getaway uh, that as a, as an overlay zone, if that allows them to contend as a um, a conforming uh, situation is, is definitely where I think we ought to be. And not in some general uh, uh, townwide um, um, regulation, that is just very specific to uh, to uh, club getaway. Because that's where we start. I mean, Adam's correct, that's where we start.
Alice or Karen?
Club getaway doesn't do what the other camp does. In fact, they, they don't do anything like it. They're, the, you know, when we say camp, at least for me, when I, when I, when I'm thinking camp, I'm thinking of a summer camp where kids go. I'm, in what club getaway is, it's club getaway, we're calling it a camp, but really it's really a little more like resort. Sometimes it's kids, sometimes it's adults. They do a whole slew of other things that we don't think about as a sleepaway camp. And that, and that's, and that's why I'm bringing this up, because it, because that's the difference for me.
Yeah, Victor Fink patterned this after Club Med. Matter of fact, he was sued by Club Med because he patterned it after it.
So I think it's possible at this point in time that um, I parsed the definition of camp into youth camp and adult camp to distinguish between the fact that club getaway doesn't really fall into our traditional definition of camper historical one, which said five or more children under eighteen years of age. So tried to create two categories here. I'm not sure that that necessarily means a separate zoning district or overlay, but it's, it's certainly an option that the commission might consider. The uh, use table in the RU one district can call out as we have uh, or will propose here, adult camp. So club getaway falls into maybe purgatory at the present time. They don't really fit into any category. So they're relying on the fact that they're sort of a non-conforming use that's been there and its uses have changed over time.
Well, it's not just that, though. They fell loosely, fell into another regulation that we removed. The last time we did the regulation, there was something that we removed that kinda covered them. And we removed that not thinking about the fact that
what this would mean for-
It was gonna, right, so, so the situation that they're in right now is partly caused by this commission.
Understood. So let's, I mean, I'm trying to help the commission find resolution and solutions here.
I was just trying to give a background.
No, I, Adam, I appreciate that because I don't, I don't have the history and the background that the commission members do. Um, I had tried to carve out this situation by the use of the term adult camp. The use of the word resort concerned me a little bit in crafting this because resort, under that umbrella terminology, could conjure up a whole bunch of activities. And I felt that the commission wanted to control the genie and how the genie gets out of the bottle here. So my thought, an option for the commission to consider here would be, is that we create this new category of adult camp. It's a camp devoted primarily to people over sixteen years of age. Club getaway applies to the commission for approval as an adult camp. And the commission, as part of that special permit review, reviews the activities which are being proposed at the site. I've seen some information presented to the commission historically about the types of activities, the programs, the different levels of activities. And the commission could look at two buckets and say, bucket one is your baseline uses. You are permitted to conduct these as part of our approval of your use as an adult camp. Go forth and and have fun. And then the other category, which I understood the commission had some concerns about, was sort of the nature of these special events. And those, as Adam, uh, excuse me, as Matt pointed out at the beginning of the meeting, could be situations where the commission says, okay, we're gonna approve all these baseline activities, these other activities we consider to be special events. We're gonna approve these on a year-by-year basis until we're comfortable that these are fine, there's no real problems, in which case we could move these over to the baseline special permit. But in the meantime, there's a shorter leash that are kept on the special event camps. So that's an option. And if the commission wants to put everything into the adult camp bucket, you could. They could apply for I mean, I don't think Elon Musk is doing space launches or whatever, but you know, again, they could put, they could apply for and the commission could approve whatever they wanted to do into the adult camp approval. I think that gets club getaway conforming status for the activities the commission authorizes.
So so do they fall under both and they apply to both, so at the times when they're having kids that are below the age of sixteen years of old, of age? Because they have times when they have kids, I believe.
Yeah, well, the question is sort of primarily, right?
Okay.
I, if, 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 um, if we were to send this regulation to public informational meeting, the comment might be, we don't like the word primarily. We don't like the word devoted. We just wanna be a family camp or an adult camp or a resort. This might be good input for the commission to receive and ponder. I looked in several planning dictionaries for the use of the word resort. And it conjures images which are different. But as you recall from what I shared with the commission in terms of nonprofit special events, there's ways to look at different definitions and then bring them all together in a way that works for Kent. And if your advice to me here tonight is, you know, these, these terms aren't really working for us. Let's just call it a resort. Find a definition that works for us and move on. I will do my best to make that happen for you. So I think as, as Matt has described and and Adam, I I feel that there's symmetry in in some of the thoughts expressed. We can move club getaway from a non-conforming camp, which in their current regs says children under the eighteen years of age. They, they've gone beyond that. Give them the opportunity in a new category to apply for and become a conforming operation with the activities approved by the commission. And then they can, certain days of the week be children, certain days of the week be adults, certain days of the week be families. Commission would have approved all of these activities and then you're good to go. And then this idea of the special events was, yes, they may want to run more significant activities that the commission doesn't want to just approve carte blanche at the get-go. And the commission might say, all right, look, weddings are okay. Or, you know, uh, corporate retreats are okay. You may do that as part of your baseline approval. But if you're not comfortable about it, until you've got some experience in terms of size limitations or traffic levels or other stuff like that, you could throw that into the special event category until you are comfortable and then flip it over. Once it goes back into the baseline special permit, I don't think you can then arrest it, stop it, modify it later. You have blessed it. So it's possible that the special events could be a way for club getaway to have the opportunity to do creative things. And you could say all sorts of things like, you know, I, I don't know how this is gonna work out, but let's try it for a year and see what happens. And then it works out great and then you just roll it into the baseline special permit, et cetera. That uh, is a possibility here, depending on what direction the commission wants to go.
Aaron, Alice?
Uh, I I personally like Glenn's approach. I like the three steps. I like the three definitions. I think it gives the commission uh, a better opportunity to assess those additional uses. And um, I thought that one of the problems we had with club uh, getaway was they didn't feel they had a baseline. So I think that's, I might be confusing, but I I think that's why I didn't like the idea of an overlay zone. Um, and I also think that the, that Glenn's approach makes it very fair for the other camp. Uh, I, I know of one, which is near me. Um, and I think this would also work with the private schools that do camps. So I personally like this approach and the definitions.
Alice?
Well, Matt, I'm still um,
Half here?
In a mind of uh, what can go wrong, having talked our earlier part of our session today. And um, so that's kinda where I'm, doesn't, I don't know if you understand what I'm saying, but uh, I thought we went into this wanting to deal with the non-conforming use of a of a, of a use of a property. So I can't help but like the idea of giving it a use, being a camp. I mean, it didn't have that, I'd almost rather give it that use and worry about the definition of camp than to give it a whole nother use, which is resort. If that means anything. But um, so I don't dislike the idea of camp at all, of expanding camps. If that's what you're looking for quite, if you're looking for a comment. I, I'm, I'm just, you know, we, we work so hard to do special permits. We work so hard to make everything fit and then lo and behold, something comes up that we that we didn't have any control of that threatens what we did. Um, and I don't, I think the camp route may be the sacred, is what I'm trying to say.
So what I would have to say is, let's, let's take inventory. Um, what are the two camps we have in town? It's camp, camp uh, uh, club getaway and Kenmont and and Kenmont. Are are there any other active camps, camp, camp Fran? Are, are there any other active camps? Camp, Camp Francis is gone. The camp that was on, uh, South Spectacle Lake is now an association. Now, I, I don't believe there's any more than, than two camps in town that have a pre-existing, um, uh, use.
Well, there's the town camp that they do at Emery.
Oh, all right, all right.
Falls into its own.
But that's town.
Yeah. And I believe that the, any of the camps that the, um, that they have at the prep schools, they're all covered under the use of the prep schools.
Yeah, that, right, right. That's an accessory use.
So they, they won't fall under, they, they won't fall under this. Right now, this regulation only affects.
Two places.
The two places.
If I could just jump in for a second, uh, is there Kenwood too, or is Kenwood part of Kenmont?
It's Kenwood, Kenmont. One's girls, one's boys.
Understood, but it's one entity, one camp, one. Okay. Thank you very much.
Anything to add, Daryl? Any, any thoughts on which direction we should go or maybe we should recommend going?
No, sort of reiterating what Alice said, you know, I thought it was good that a nonconforming entity came before us and wanted to find a way to become conforming and, and, you know, sort of uh, follow along with the guidelines of the intent of zoning. It doesn't particularly bother me whether we do that with an overlay zone where it's permitted by right or we do it by special permit. It, it's still going to be more conforming than it is. Um, you know, I'm for whichever we, the commission feels is the most um, stable. Um, and you know, whether that means that we make a provision to allow um, special events that become part of, part of what's permitted or whether we go, you know, with an all out definition. I'm, I'm good either way, as long as we reach the goal.
Well, I, like I said, I was, I was good with either one, but I wanted us to have a discussion about. Because I feel like we, I felt like we didn't have a discussion about whether we were going to have an overlay zone or not, or whether we were going to do this. But I feel like now we've had that discussion. It seems like more people are leaning towards towards this camp, youth, youth camp and camp adult. Rather than with the special permit camp, rather than trying to do an overlay zone, which I'm sure has its own problems also.
Well, you can call it what you want to do, but to me it, it looks like it's spot zoning.
The overlay zone, it would definitely be spot zoning.
Yeah.
I think, I think just as a quick aside, I think there is protection under the statutes for what's called a planned development district, which I know the commission heard about before. When they adopted, legislature adopted Public Act twenty one, twenty nine, they specifically carved out that you can create planned development districts. And so that does give you a little bit of protection under a spot zoning claim.
It, right, exactly.
But my thought would be, I think, based on the conversation we've had here tonight already, it's, I found it very helpful. I think my sense is I'd like to go back and tweak these definitions a little bit. And, and maybe instead of calling it adult camp, it's a non-youth camp. Right? Which is a camp, anything which doesn't fall under the state definition or the state license. So it's a, it's, and then the issue is, is a permitted use, uh, in the RU one district is a non-youth camp. And we would encourage Club Getaway to apply for approval as a non-youth camp and establish the baseline of activities. The commission will use the special permit criteria and the regulations to determine what uses are reasonable, appropriate, have been conducted for years with no issues or problems and establish that baseline. And that gives Club Getaway the conforming status for a significant percentage of the activities that they've expressed interest.
We should, we should be careful though. I'm sorry, Glenn, interrupt, but we should be careful to understand that, uh, that part of Club Getaway's baseline operation is um, school groups coming up to stay in their cabin. So that's the school groups come up and they're, they're, they're certainly they're, they're young kids who are coming up and spending a couple of days in the cabins. They come up for day camps. Um, and we know that, uh, that last year, last summer, and then this summer, the, the camp, the town camp that, uh, that we were discussing just a few minutes ago with a couple of the members. That is happening at Club Getaway too. So that's a, it's a town day camp and that's for youth. So they, they really are based on your, your two definitions here. They really fall under both categories and is there a reason why they couldn't apply for a special permit under both of the definitions?
Um. No, I, I, I think youth camp, I think the way I understand the way the state law works on this is a, is a narrowly defined camp for children under the eighteen years of age, which is licensed in accordance with that section of the general statutes. Other camps, whatever we decide to call that, adult camp, non-youth camp or whatever, is any other that camp in any, anything else. It's, it's not confined to this youth issue. I think for a definition here of what we're calling the youth camp, the town can rely in large part under the licensing by the state under section nineteen A four twenty. A Club Getaway camp does not fall under that licensing procedure. And so it really comes down to what the commission would authorize and approve here. And that's where I think the concept of a baseline level of activities, you guys are doing everything from youth through adult, family, combinations of all of the above, sure. And the commission can review and approve that and give them the baseline approval and make them conforming to that extent. And then the special event provisions I feel would give them the ability to request additional events, which might be larger attendance. Potentially what the state sometimes calls mass gathering activities that are going to involve, hang on a second here, what are we going to do about, you know, police, fire, traffic management, other situations? They may never fall or rise to that level. But I think the commission could approach those in a more cautious way, rather than having one, one approval of a baseline. And then that's, that's done and dusted. Uh, I think the special offense gives you the opportunity to try things out. See what a great success they are, add that into the baseline later and, and move on so that it gets to adapt and grow and change. Even to things like COVID. Nobody knew COVID was going to happen. And Club Getaway adapted to that and found their way through. So I think I feel it could work. And if the commission was comfortable, I think I would tweak some of these definitions. And might suggest that we consider adding this to April to see, to our April public informational meeting to see what we get for feedback. It's not the proposed regulation. It's not the public hearing on adoption. But it's a chance to get feedback.
Glenn, I think you're on the right track and Matt, uh, I'm afraid I'm going to have to sign off.
Thanks for being here, Wes.
Glenn, thank you very much.
Thanks, Wes.
If, if we are going down that road, um, Club Getaway prepared, um, the quote unquote, Club Getaway current operations document. And they, and they, they sent that over to us in September of twenty one. And that seemed to be, at that point, um, when we started this conversation, it seemed to be a pretty comprehensive, um, description of what they were doing. Last month, when we spoke about this, um, it came up that um, I, when, when I reread that, um, that current operations document, um, it didn't seem, it didn't say that they were doing concerts there. But my understanding is that, uh, is that there are some concert components to some of the, the white, um, to some of their, to, to some of their programs there. So at some point we're going to want, I think, um, David to expand on that document so that we know exactly what's, what's, what he's doing, what his baseline operation is. Cause it doesn't do us any good to have, to have some activity that, that he's calling something, um, that has concerts in it, but we don't know that there's concerts there. And so if he has concerts and we said, wait, wait, what, what, what are you doing? He said, this is what I've always been doing anyway. So, um.
Can I ask a question about that, Matt? Because what do we want to call a concert or define a concert? Because I'm wondering, so like, I mean, people have live music. And live music is performed in front of a crowd. You know, um, so he has his guests, he has live music. Is that a concert?
And, and.
Doesn't, that's a great question.
Um, I, cause I think it makes a difference is, or is, because he also did, he did a real concert where he had a lot of people here. It did not go over well in town and, um, so I, so Glenn, I think we also have to consider what, what is a concert? What are we going to make a concert?
Yeah. So if I can jump ahead, I, I, I tried to think that issue through, Adam, because I think you're absolutely right. It's very important here. So I think the issue for the commission's consideration here is to, uh, for the applicant as part of, uh, special permit for camp special events, or even as part of the baseline approval to figure out the different categories of events. So you could have chamber music in an inside building. You're, you're not going to hear that from very far away. You could have, uh, a wedding band playing inside a closed building. Or you could have a wedding band playing outside oriented so that the sound bounces off the hills and has a much larger impact. Or you might have hours of operation, or you might say, listen, that on weekdays, there's no outside music past eight PM or ten PM or decibel levels of such, or something like that. I think this becomes part of the commission's challenge here. I can help you craft regulations that would give you the framework, but then it's up to the commission to decide. And you might try with the assistance of Club Getaway, different decibel les, levels of music and say, you know what, as long as it's less than a hundred and twenty decibels, it's fine. We're good. It's a big property. Or as long as the building's closed, knock yourself out. It's not going to transmit much outside of the building. These types of situations, the commission is going to have to grapple with over time. So I, I tried to create a structure here that would give you the ability to look at that. Even further down here on the list, we're talking about some of the, uh, special events. If it's a wedding of two hundred people, I don't think the first selectmen, state police, volunteer fire, county ambulance, Torrington Health District, or anybody else are going to have any other concerns about a two hundred person wedding, because the attendance at the camp is already exceeding that as part of other types of activity. If they had four or five weddings at one time, each at two hundred people, now we're at a thousand competing bands, that might be an issue. So I think that's where the commission is going to end up working closely with Club Getaway over time to allow them to adapt. But also to you know, uh, manage the activities that are, occur out there. So I think that the framework here can provide Club Getaway the conforming status that they desire. Um, it doesn't bless everything that they may have ever done in the past. The commission and Club Getaway would agree on the baseline activities that are hereby approved going forward. And then other activities could throw into this special event category. And over time, commission could consider request to move something from a special event that has to be, go through this process every year to, it's all part of the baseline and there's no application for camp special events, or they come along once every five years or something else like that. So that was my thought.
So that, that makes sense to me and, and to, you know, follow on, on, on Adam's question, you know, Adam, I, I would say that's, that, uh, you know, Club Getaway knows what they're doing, right? So whether they, if they call it a concert or if they call it, you know, a, it's a, a band on a bandstand with a couple of people in, in, in lawn chairs. It's, I, I think we leave that, leave it to them to describe to us what it is that the baseline is. And then we say, okay, that's, you've been doing that all along and that's, that's part of the, part of this baseline special permit. Right? So let them describe it to us.
Okay.
Which they, which I think they, they mostly have done alright. We just, and I'm not suggesting that they do it now, but as we, as, as they get, as, as we finalize this regulation and they come in for that baseline special permit, then they can, they can expand upon that. But that's where I'd like to start with that, with that, um, current operations presented to us back in, uh, September of twenty one.
Is it? Is the commission comfortable that I would make some changes to this to reflect our conversations here tonight? But then allow there to be a public informational topic on this at the public informational meeting to see what we get for comments and feedback. And then we can revisit at that time, based on what we've heard and learned. And again, determine whether or not we think we're on the right path.
I think so. You know, I'd rather not work in a, in a vacuum without the, without the balance of the community, you know, providing some guidance.
I, I think it would be good to get comments. Maybe somebody will have something that'll be interesting for us to listen to and, and change or adjust or.
So I think what I would propose to do, if it's okay for the commission, all the text right now shows up as red. There's red all over the place. I think I'd like to simplify this and just make it a little bit cleaner, if you will, without all the colors and everything else. And maybe even put a little introductory information on the front to say, this is what our goal and intent is here. A, make them, give them the opportunity to become a conforming use. Uh, number two is establish a baseline of activities which are permitted at the site. Number three is give them the ability to, um, propose special events on a one-time basis or an annual basis. And then based on the commission's, uh, review of those, they can move those activities over to the baseline approval, um, over time. Okay.
Great.
Right. I see some nodding heads. I'm ready, I'm ready to, to go with, with that. Does that sound okay?
That's great.
Sounds good to me.
Um, so before we move off of this, um, I just wanted to, I wanted to get the, the commission's temperature on, um, uh, on an issue, and maybe it's not an issue, but just I want to bring your attention that, that it appears that, uh, the, uh, the council, that Club Getaway's council has reached directly out to, uh, Mike Siska to try to engage him on, um, on this regulation, this revised regulation. And I am, uh, my feeling is that that, that, that's, that's our attorney should be our attorney. We should be speaking with him ourselves and, and, um, unless we give it's the thumbs up that, um, Club Getaway's attorney should not be speaking with our attorney. Do you generally agree with that or, or, or do you think I'm, um, uneasy without, um, merit?
No, I think you're right on that, especially because we pay for our attorney. So what he's doing should come in discussion with us. They should be coming before the commission and then we can ask Mike Siska what we need to ask Mike.
Uh, Matt, I'm confused. I don't know if Matt Siska is willing to talk to them about us and I'm, I'm confused knowing the legal protocol of that. Am I misunderstanding something?
Only that, that it appeared that, that Dwight Miriam reached out to Mike Siska and Mike Siska said, you know, we shouldn't be speaking and, uh, uh, I should be speaking with the, with my commission. And I wanted to make sure that you guys all thought that that was proper, Mike's response and we could ask.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Just so the commission's aware, I reached out to Mike Siska to ask Mike for his thoughts or reactions to this regulation. Because I didn't want to put anything before the commission that Mike was later going to have concerns about. So Mike and I have had conversations. Um, I, uh, doing research and investigation on this, trying to catch up on, on the history. I think Donna had put together some, a timeline, if you will, over time. I found that very helpful. Um, and I, uh, asked Mike whether or not it would be useful for us to have a conversation with the proprietor of Club Getaway and others. And I think that's what precipitated this conversation with Matt. So I think communication is always helpful in a situation like this, but if the commission is comfortable going to a public informational meeting, which is not a public hearing, it's not an official act. So I think communication is always helpful in a situation like this, but if the commission is comfortable going to a public informational meeting, which is not a public hearing, it's not an official act, it's not anything else. There's an opportunity to receive. Comment at that meeting, and then we can decide where to go from there.
And I, I, I think I remember um, Glenn, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that at our meeting last month, we had, that CEO had somewhat suggested that, that you would, you would like to go and um. Speak with Mike, just to make sure we're on the right track, and we, so we, we had spoken about that as a group.
Yes. And I spoke, I spoke with him the next day. So. Or shortly thereafter.
All right, good. Um. All right, thanks. That's uh, that's, that's.
Well, thank you. I think that's very helpful for me. So the next two issues uh, for the commission is your pleasure, housing in the village residential or conservation development in the village residential?
Alice, how long do you think you have? It's, it's, it's really just a crap shoot, right? Um.
Me?
Yeah, tonight.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm here. I'm not going anywhere for a while.
Good, because, because I, I know, I know, I want you, I, I would like, you know, you, you've. You've had some comments regarding the uh, conservation subdivision. Um, so I'd like you to be part of that conversation. If you're here. Then maybe we, maybe we jump to five D and tackle that first while we've uh, while we've got at least Alice on the screen.
So I think the commission received this uh, material here. Um, as part of your packet for this meeting, let me just make this a little bit bigger here for a second. So, so what I did here um, is uh, took the village residential. Regulations and the rural residential regulations related to conservation development and put them side by side. Um, so that the commission could see the parallels in language and see where there were. Me, you know, differentiation between these two. Um, I think originally our conversation started. Uh, on line four of this table. Uh, I'm no, not line four, it must be, hang on a second here. Yeah, it's on the next page. I apologize. Uh, so there's quite a li- lot of parallel between the two regulations. Um, some minor things that were adjusted. Uh, informal discussion is strongly encouraged in the RU one. It doesn't show up as part of the village residential. Conservation development is required in the uh, rural residential district. It's allowed. Uh. In the V R by special permit. Um, how the methodology that, uh, the number of lots that are permitted. Um, there's a mathematical calculation based on soil types. In the rural residential and in the V R, I, I think there's a little confusion here in the wording in terms of the. Total lot area. Um, it would seem to me that I, my understanding of what the intent would be in this is to reduce the total area by forty percent. Or. A greater percentage of open space, not, not a lesser. And then. From what's left from that deduction, you now take the minimum lot size requirement on. So I think some clarification can happen in that language there. I think, uh, hang on a second.
So Glenn, could you go back to that uh, that, that, that page?
Yep.
Um, and I, I, I'd also like to explore in that same um, village. Um, the V R one and V R two, that the idea the, of the third bullet where we are. We're, we're taking a further fifteen percent reduction for open space set aside, but not. From the, not from the total square footage. Um, but we're taking it, it seemingly, the, the way that the order goes, we're taking it from the number of. Units allowed. Right? So if, 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 if we say that you're right, that the, that the to- the total area in the first bullet is the total area. And then the, and then the total area in the second bullet is the resultant. Um, is, is sixty percent of the total area.
Yep.
And we're dividing that by the, by the number of square feet, five thousand or fifteen thousand. Um, which gets us, I think that gets us the number of. Units. Right? And then we're, we're reducing the number of units by fifteen percent. It seems to be, we're, we're, we're changing, we're changing. Acreage and square footage to number of units, a number of dwelling units allowed. So I'd, I'd like to explore. Changing or clarifying that.
Yeah, it almost seems like a double deduction, doesn't it?
It, it does, and I never, it's, well. Um, I, I am not sure that we intended that there would be a. I mean, if you, if it's straight math, that, that it was fifty-five percent. Of open space as opposed to forty.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So um.
You know, that third bullet, Matt, as you point out, would be something that would. Discourage people from granting more open space at the beginning, because it's going to kind of hit them later. So the issue might be, maybe we have one. One provision for open space and then uh, go from there.
And then one other question that I had, and this has been. Um, I, I'd just like to clarify with the balance of the commission, because when we wrote this, um. It was my understanding that the, you know, unless as modified by the commission, which is, which is the languages that's in the regulation, um. Uh, a minimum of forty percent must be set aside. So I'd like, I'd like to clarify what that means, and I know that, that uh, for me. For me, it, it has always meant that we, we could modify it to be less than forty percent, or modify it to be more than forty percent. And I know that Donna said that you can't ever modify it to be less. Um, you can only modify, modify it to be, to be more. Um, but I'd, I'd like for them to be, I'd like for there to be a standard. Um, this is what we want you to hold. Open.
Yeah, so I think is, is.
Matt, excuse me, Matt, just so you know, that's my biggest, that. Element right there is my biggest issue with our current. Regulations.
Right, and, and without putting words in your mouth, right, Alice, the second one is you think that the open space should be calculated after you deduct for the primary and secondary conservation.
Right.
Um, and I, I'd, you know, I'm not putting those words in my mouth, I'm putting those words in yours, because I'm not sure that, that you and I are on the same page, but yeah.
So when I crafted this language as part of the conservation development in the RU one district, the basic approach was intended to be. That starting off, coming out of the chute, the issue was you, the applicant. Are obligated to preserve. Fifty percent of the conservation development area or the parcel. As open space, preferably in one continuous parcel. If you said, well, you know, the circumstances don't work out optimally, but I've got some really great land over here, et cetera, I'd like to give you forty-two percent. The special permit requirement was to say the commission can only reduce this. By the granting of a special permit. It's pretty unusual for a commission in the middle of an application process to increase the open space set aside requirement on an applicant. So it'd be my advice for the, for your consideration. We got to figure out a way to word this better. That it accomplishes what the commission desires and intends. If we establish a baseline of fifty percent open space, you can certainly give us more, but. You're not going to give us less unless you've got a really good reason for that, and then we're going to do that through a special permit process. So. To obligate an applicant. Because. We would like seventy percent of your parcels open space. I'm deliberately picking sort of a, a kind of a crazy number. Is harsh. That's hard to do. I think the commission. Might be subject to some legal claims with regard to that. In, in this regulation here, what we said is, look. Fifty percent is what we're anticipating and expecting. And if you're going to go below that, you better have a darn good reason for it, and there's going to be a very clear review of it. I noticed in the village residential that it ended up at forty percent. And it carries through the unless modified by the commission language. So I think that it's not my finest wording. And it got carried over to the village residential, and it's not the finest wording there either. And I'd like to take a shot, I think, at addressing this. And craft it in a way that essentially says. Maybe we're going to modify both of these, but. Minimum is fifty percent. If it's going to be less than fifty percent, you need a special permit from the commission in the rural residential. And. Maybe in the village residential, it's up to the commission. We can do that there by a special permit. Or say, minimum is forty percent. Um, in the commission, you know. Can, upon. Submission of compelling information, reduce that number. But I wouldn't encourage the commission to. Modify the percentage. Based on the application, whether or not you like it, or it's got significant resources, et cetera. I think. The other parts of the regulation which relate to the. Feasibility plan or the suitability plan and the primary conservations and the secondary conservation areas. We pretty much say there that primary conservation areas cannot be used for development. That the secondary areas can be considered for development. Uh, but we really would like it to be in the parts of the site which do not fall into those categories. So just jumping ahead a couple of pages here, this is, this is the text here highlighted. Which says. Areas of the site which are not primary or secondary may be considered potential development areas, lots, streets, trails, and other improvements may be cited in these areas. Commission doesn't like the quality of the analysis. They can hire their own. Professional at the applicant's expense. And the commission can refer the plan to anybody they want to, to get their thoughts or feedback. These provisions didn't end up in the village residence, and we may want to carry those over.
So. Did, there, there was a, there, there were some talk about. Um, not using those primary and secondary um. Development areas as, as criteria anymore. And I, I thought we discussed that as part of our, our latest plan of conservation and development. Am I misremembering?
I think the recommendation in the P O C D was that the primary and secondary designations were not favored. I think it was the conservation commission, if my recollection is correct. I don't have the plan nearby.
You know, as, as we're doing this, and we want to make it. More open space, this is supposed to be. You know, an incentive. Zone, so we have to be careful, you know. We don't even have to go through this process. We can just get rid of this regulation if we want to make it so restrictive that. A developer doesn't want to do it. The whole purpose of this was so somebody. Could. Create greater density than what our zoning allows. By creating more open space. Right? I mean, that's really what this is about. So. All of a sudden, now we're talking about making it fifty percent, making it something more. And we had this discussion when we made the, the previous. Percentage and, and part of that percentage, that forty percent was, was based on what was a develop, what would? Why would a developer even want to do this? So I just want us to be careful. We're going to spend a lot of time working on this. If we want to make it so restrictive that a developer can't do it, then let's just not have it.
Yeah, and I, I, I absolutely, I wholeheartedly agree with that, Adam. I, and I think that, and I, I think that the forty percent in the, in the V R one and V R two. We, we decided on that because, because we wanted to promote. Housing in the village residential district, right? In the V R one and V R two. So, um, so forty percent seemed to make. Um, it seemed to make sense to us. And the primary and the secondary conservation areas, if there's, if we are in the, in the rural zone, um. And. By. By building. In the primary and secondary conservation areas, um, you allow for, um, I'm sorry, if, if, if you, if you don't take those out of the calculation and leave them in, then you allow for more of a. Maybe you allow for a more contiguous piece of open space. Um, where you might have open space that's more frag- fragmented if you, if you uh, didn't take those out.
And I thought our regulation already included that. You couldn't, you know, the steep slopes, all that stuff was already excluded from the. Because it was unbuildable, so it was excluded from. The forty percent. I thought that was already in the regulation.
It's in the, the, the uh, the rural zone, but it's not in the, in the V R one and V R two. That's the, the primary and secondary.
Adam, Adam, that's exactly where I think the confusion is. Because I'm not sh- I'm not, I don't know why we distinguish. What we consider buildable, whether it's rural or not. If it's not buildable, it's not buildable. So. And that's my other problem with is the non-buildable part. Part of the open space. Requirement. You see what?
Well, I thought.
I'm making any sense. I may not be making any sense. I don't know.
I understand what you're saying. I think you're making.
Okay. Okay.
But I, that's what I'm, I thought, at least, and as Matt said, at least in the rural zone. That those, you, you have a piece of property and they're in, on the prop- piece of property, there may be wetlands and steep slopes that are. Useful and buildable. And when they look at that whole piece of property, well, those pieces are taken away. And they're not part of the calculation. Of what's going to be open space. So they're. They're not even considered. If they have a hundred acres and twenty of it is. Is steep slopes and, and wetlands or, or. What the. Regulations defining, then you've got eighty acres to work within forty percent of that has to be open space, not forty percent of the hundred.
Right. Right.
But, or do, do you want to do that in both the rural and the, in the, in the village center, or do you want to, or do you, do you want to have them both? You want to have that calculation for both the village center, V R one and V R two, and the RU one, or do you just want to have that in the RU one? And let there be a more, more density in the V R one and V R two?
I think we.
I would.
City in the. V R one.
What?
I think we want more density in the V R one and V R two. Don't even, that's in town. That's where, if we're going to have more density, that's where we want more density. And, and, and I think as we're thinking about this, we also have to think about where is there even a possibility of something like this happening? In the V R one and V R two, because, because there's not that much. Room there left. Right? I mean. The North Kent Road was, was one, and that's where, or that North Kent Project, um. Not North Kent Road was one and um. There's not that. There's not that many other open spaces that are not in the hundred-year floodplain. That, that could utilize. That I don't think, you know. That isn't already preserved or eased. There's not that much space.
And then to provide Glenn with just, just, just one last thought from me with regard to um, the. Conservation subdivision in the rural zone. Um, in the. Um, in the V R one and V R two regulation, um, a conservation subdivision is listed as permitted in, by special permit. Right? But on, in the rural zone, um, conservation subdivision isn't listed as a, as a permitted use anywhere. Um, except for when you get into the overlay, into the overlay zone, right?
Well, the, a little bit different, Matt. So in the RU one district, we created the overlay zone.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, conservation development overlay district, and in that zone, it requires. The conservation development.
Okay. So, so that's, that, that's, that's where it becomes allowed is by that, in that overlay.
It's not allowed, it's required.
Required.
So any future development in the RU one district. Requires a conservation development approach. So. I mean, Adam, your thought about higher density in the V R one, V R two, I've highlighted the text here. The baseline lot sizes. In the V R one is ten thousand square feet, and under this approach, you get five. And the baseline lot size in the V R two is thirty thousand square feet, and here you get fifteen. So. The lot sizes were cut in half on this.
Yeah.
But you were supposed to give forty percent. As open space, and then as Matt had pointed out, we get this. Point eight five factor also applied to that. So. It may work out as to roughly the same number of lots you would otherwise have gotten in the V R one, the V R two. But.
Well, that's what I thought was happening. You know, in that north of town project. I mean, they were. They wanted to have greater density, but they. By pushing everything up front. You know, I, I just say. If we're going to have the regulation, we should make it so, so there's an incentive for somebody to do it.
I managed to reach over and grab my copy of the P O C D. The comment we've received on the P O C D with regard to the concept of primary and secondary conservation areas was to blur that distinction. They're all important resources. And also to add in core forest and protected forest corridor slash greenways. So if I understand the conversation here correctly at this point in time, we might talk about changes to the V R conservation development, but also the R U one conservation development. If the commission is interested in doing so, that we would remove, as Adam says, the unbuildable land, which is really what we're talking about, sort of the, the primary conservation areas, just remove that from the equation. And now the open space requirement applies to the remaining land, the quote, buildable land. Got it.
And, and that's, Adam, would you say that's in the, in the rural zone or in the rural and V R one, V R two?
I thought we had that in the rural zone and, and we would add that to the V R one and V R two. Right? Or?
So the, the original, the, the original rural zone concept was to prepare a site-based resource plan. Went identify the most sensitive natural resources, as you call them, the sort of the unbuildable areas. Um, and use that as the foundation for the conservation side of this analysis. Um, and then add into that the other areas, which could be the scenic views, it could be archaeological sites, it could be a lot of other types of resources. And then if there are parts of the site that didn't fall into either one of those categories, those were our preferred areas that use site development, because those are least likely to have impacts on sensitive resources. So the approach that we had crafted, uh, in that rewrite of the zoning regulations was to try to move to an environmentally planning-based approach. Um, so I think that, uh, we can certainly go back and modify this approach to reflect the commission's experience with this over the last couple of years and craft a regulation. So I think I think what my current thought process would be to prepare revised regulations to section, uh, I think sixty seven hundred, which is the village res, or maybe it's thirty one, whichever one is the village residential conservation development in the V R, and then the conservation development in the rural residential. Reflecting what I think the, the guidance the commission is giving me, we can get public comment on that and then talk about that further. And then we could roll this into the April meeting too, if you were so inclined. Or if you think it's not ready yet until we've had another chance to look at it, we can, we can, I can put that together and we can talk about it and not, not talk about it in April.
I'm good with talking about in April. I, I think what I, what I want to do is at least for the, for the V R one and the V R two, is I just want to look at what how much land, or what are those areas that were, that are even possible? You know, that, where this regulation could fall in, because if we you know, here in two areas that we want greater debt, density. If there was going to be something like this, we'd like greater density. If we take out, you know, pieces, you know, one of the maybe two pieces of property where you could do this, um, and we take out all the things we're talking about excluding in the rural residential, then, and then, and then we're going to take another forty percent from that. We're taking away, we may be just taking, making it impossible to happen, you know.
I, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to tend to agree with that, Adam, right? Because the, it's just, just looking at the, you know, looking at the open parcels, and I don't know, I don't know whether they have been eased or whether they're protected in some way, but the open parcels in town, I mean, they're really primary agricultural, they're, they're farm soils, they, they have to be just by looking at them, right? So that would then might knock out the whole thing. It might have knocked out the whole of the one hundred North Main. Because that was, you know, it was, it was, you know, tillable soil.
Right. And then once you, you know, they all have that, they, they all have that steep slope, which you can't build on anyway, that drops right down to the hundred year floodplain, which you can't build in anyway. So, so those, those couple of properties there, possible properties there. There's already a great deal that isn't buildable on them. I just wanted to look at it and, and come back to the commission with that. Look, the, this is, these are the areas that we, we have, that we're even talking about in the first place. Cause I think there's not much.
So Glenn, do you have the answers you think you need?
I think I've got enough, Matt, to move the concepts forward. I don't think I have enough information to feel comfortable. I have commission consensus yet. But I think we're on a journey here with a bunch of regulation changes. Some of them are more developed than others, and this one is in a more embryonic stage. So I think what I would propose to do is craft something that I think, based on our discussion here tonight, gets us closer to where I think the commission is talking about going. And then you can say to me, you know, yes, on this and no, not so much on that. Um, and we'll continue to work on this regulation to, both regulations actually, um, to have it reflect what the commission wants. So I think I'll go to the format we've been using on the other regulation, which is the sidebar um, commentary, um, as we're going through. And I think we're talking about modifying both the um, conservation overlay zone in the R U one and the conservation development in the V R. And I'll take a shot at that and we'll go from there.
The one other question I just wanted to ask, um, more in regards to the V R one and V R two, uh, because it's come up um, it before is which ends up being a further restriction. If somebody is doing a subdivision in the V R one and V R two, do we want to require some portion component of that to be affordable? To be affordable housing, if they're building ten units is, is one of those supposed to be affordable? Um, are we not including that? Do we not want to even get into that with a, with a with this kind of a, a conservation subdivision, but maybe it's something that we're, we have in, in the regular subdivision rules, but you know, it came, it's come up a couple of times. It came up as a request. You know, for the, uh, for the subdivision up north of town. So I just figured we should bring it up while we're talking about it.
So the only thing, uh, I guess I'd like to sort of, uh, add two things into the conversation. First of all, I, I think the, the town worked on preparing its affordable housing plan. There's a number of recommendations in there for consideration for implementation as we go forward, and I would support that effort. Um, when I put together the proposal for doing this work for the commission, I didn't include that. And there's enough work that's involved in that, that I don't think I can fit that in, Adam, within the budget we've already agreed to.
That's fine.
We, we, we either supplement the budget or we kick this can down the road. Um, and, and I think we've got enough going on to our plates right now that we might move ahead with these regulations. And then as the commission wants to, either with the assistance of Jocelyn, who helped on the affordable housing plan or otherwise, embark on the next step of modifying the regulations, which would be that particular issue, and it may imply in more situations or townwide. So, um, maybe not now, but hopefully soon.
Okay, I'm good with that. I just think it said, it, it had come up before, so I thought I should bring it up now.
All right. So I think we're close on that. I'm ready to go to the, the, the next topic, if you are.
Yes. You guys go ahead and get started. I have to step away just for a moment.
Yep. So, um, the issue here that the commission was looking at had to really sort of do with village residential district and particularly issues related to accessory dwelling units, et cetera. Um, in crafting this, I noticed that we have a limitation here that we do allow for multiple family dwellings in the V R one and V R two. Um, but the buildings are restricted to eight dwelling units. And there might be a situation that nine or ten units are permitted on a property, which means you're forced to break your development into two buildings and one may be fine. So I didn't know if that provision or limitation was necessary. So I just highlighted it here for, in yellow for sort of, uh, conversation uh, going forward. The issue about accessory residential units, um, is addressed in section thirty one thirty of the regulations. Either internal or attached is permitted by zoning permit. And a detached unit or a guest house is permitted by special permit. Whoops. So the table in section sixty two hundred here indicates in the different zoning districts, how the different types of accessory dwelling units or guest houses are permitted. So some of these, um, areas the commission may want to revisit or reconsider in terms of the type of approval. The Birch Hill area is set up in such a way that it's dense enough and compact enough that accessory dwelling units, um, either internal or attached, uh, require a special permit from the commission. And if it's detached or it's a guest house, the, the regulations point out that those are simply not allowed. So the opportunity exists here to consider modifying some of these provisions in terms of the type of approvals um, that we currently require. Um, the Public Act twenty one twenty nine, which I think the commission is familiar with, essentially allowed for accessory dwelling units by zoning permit across the board, um, unless towns opted out. Um, but these again might be areas that the commission might want to, uh, consider. We did.
Just wanted to ask a question. What's the, so an attached dwelling unit, which I understand, an internal dwelling unit, how is that different?
So an internal dwelling unit is you're not actually doing anything to the outside of the structure. You're just, um, divvying up the rooms and outfitting them with bathrooms and kitchens and all the other stuff without actually physically changing the outside of the unit. So that's, let's call it within, maybe within is a better word than an internal here. Attached means that now you're going to be adding on, um, to, to the building in some way, shape or form. Maybe you're going to put a first floor master bedroom on, and that's going to become part of a, a unit. But there's actually physical expansion that goes on. Um, and then detached is it's physically separate and distinct.
Okay, no, I, I, I have no problem with internal. I was just, it's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure that, that I understood it correctly.
I just chime in on the difference between the two-family house and the attached dwelling unit. Kinda is a constant cause of chaos in the office for some reason. It's my understanding that the two-family, the only difference between the two is the two-family doesn't have to be owner occupied. And the attached, one of, one or the other has to be owner occupied, but at some point, maybe that, this, it's not the right point, but I just figured I'd bring it up. Maybe that could be discussed a little bit more detail.
I think that's an important issue, Ty, because I think the issue that does come up when these regulations were crafted, could have been five or more years ago. Um, that the issue we were trying to capture is what was the commission doing at that time in terms of accessory dwelling in it? So I'm not quite sure exactly when those regulations started. But there's been quite of a bit of additional thought on the whole concept of accessory dwelling in it. The benefits that they can provide in terms of housing and housing opportunities for people, uh, et cetera. Some people strongly favor them, people, other people are concerned about, you know, is it going to change the character of the neighborhood or the community in some way, shape or form? So it's an issue which I think is ripe for discussion here overall. Um, the issue on a two-family dwelling is that, uh, I or somebody else could buy a building in Kemp and make a two-family out of it. Um, and I, it doesn't have to be owner occupied, but here on an accessory dwelling unit, we're saying, no, 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 if you're going to do this accessory dwelling unit, one of the units has to be owner occupied. And part of that is, you know, with Airbnb and other things, people have gone to other areas, bought houses and turned them into Airbnbs or two units of Airbnb, and those can also remove housing stock that's otherwise available to meet the needs of residents. So it's a, it's a very delicate balancing act, but I can understand Ty why those questions have come up.
And, and another issue is just the, there's a weird conflict with the building code. Apparently there is no real like accessory dwelling unit noted in there. So there's like firewall issues and there's, it's just constant turmoil between, I mean, we all get along very well. This creates a little bit of confusion when like an accessory dwelling unit is approved, and then it finally hits the building department, and then it's realized, oh my God, you need firewalls. You know, because it's, it wasn't called a two-family, but essentially it is a two-family. I don't know that that's your problem, but I'm just kind of letting you know what we deal.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah, it'd be part of the, I don't know, discussion and thoughts.
Yep. So I think the commissions received correspondence and the text in the regulation says that, uh, accessory dwellings are permitted only when accessory to a single family dwelling. And the question was raised, well, could we also make that accessory to a two-family dwelling or accessory to a two-family dwelling if one of the units was deed restricted as affordable? I think, uh, there's language in here that talks about the accessory dwelling unit. So if we modify the number that might be permitted on a property, that needs to change. Language that says only one accessory apartment or guest house will be permitted, we might want to consider changing that. I think based on our change to the parking requirements elsewhere, um, we would also want to address that here. Um, there are some provisions, uh, which are carried through in the regulation. Um, the town opted out of the accessory dwelling unit provisions in Public Act twenty one twenty nine. Uh, but that specifically addressed some of these issues about an operable door on a common wall and some of these other provisions. But if we're in the regulations today, the commission might want to, uh, you know, take a look at some of these or, or tweak them unnecessarily. Um, so what are, what are the commission's thoughts in terms of, uh, the issues related to accessory dwellings and guest houses? Um, what sort of guidance can you give me of how to address your needs? I think you're muted, Matt.
Um, I'm not quite sure how to, how to tackle the problem or the, the distinction between, um, an attached accessory dwelling, where it's a building with an attached accessory versus a, a two-family house. Um, but it seems to me that the plan of conservation and development was looking for sort of a relaxation of the regulations to allow for more housing units in town anyway. Um, so it, it, it seems to me that if we go to, um, the, the page that you're on and, um, number four, only one accessory apartment or guest house shall be permitted on any premises, on any premises, um, um, we can maybe, we can maybe add, um, accept that two accessory drones may be permitted when one is deed restricted. Um, and the deed restrictions. Um, and it, that, that sounds like it makes, it, it, it follows along with what we're trying to do in, in terms of, um, in terms of providing, or at least making, uh, more housing units available, making it easier for housing units to be available.
Are we doing that for the V R one and V R two?
V R one and V R two is what I would, what I would say. Um, yes. Um, and then I also think that, that it, that we should be somewhat conforming. You know, we were just talking earlier about the, about the amount of open space, and it, it makes sense to me that there's, there's differing levels of open space required for, um, conservation developments. Um, but in our regulations, sometimes we say that, uh, um, sometimes we say that, um, I'm sorry, hold on, there's, there's, uh, there's this idea about, um, yes, eighty percent, um, eighty percent and thirty years. So, so the, so the deed restriction is, um, that, um, it's available for rent or for mostly for rent for people earning eighty percent of the, of the median income. And that, and that the deed restriction is thirty years.
So why thirty, Matt?
It's only, it's thirty because it's it that it it tells the set someplace else.
Well, the only reason I've just raised that issue is that if the, there there's two ways to consider the concept of an affordable deed restricted affordable unit. You can deed restrict a unit to an income level that is appropriate and eighty percent is a common consideration. And you can also do it for a specific term, so for most housing units, it's a forty year term. If it's not a forty year term, the state won't count it or include it on the Affordable Housing Appeals list.
Hold on, Virginia, I think that what we, what I saw in the, in the village housing. Maybe it was in the village housing overlay that I was, that it was someplace it was eighty and thirty, but all all I mean to say is that we should, we should codify what what we are doing, I think, so whether it's eighty percent or fifty percent and whether it's thirty or forty or fifteen, I think that we should that we should be thoughtful and conform those, make those conforming wherever we can.
It is, you're right, Matt, it is thirty percent, the village housing overlay, excuse me, thirty years. That is interesting, okay.
And it's different than than what, than than the the deed restriction document that we had in the, in the, the, in the folder. Which talks about fifteen years, you know, the affordability period is fifteen years and I know that that Virginia wants to comment on that.
Well, could I say that forty years is very, very unknown to me for any affordable housing restriction, deed restriction. Twenty years is much more common, thirty years is unknown to me as well. And the reason that I want fifty years for my own particular peculiar thing is that I'm eighty five years old. And when the property passes with my estate in fifteen years, it would be able to be sold free of restriction. That may not be necessary, but I think thirty and forty years is way out of the normal restriction for affordable housing.
And then I, and then I will mention here that in this declaration, this the restrictive comment that that that's in the folder. They talk about fifty percent of the AMI, right, as opposed to eighty percent, which is in our, in our regulations and I think, I think it's, we should, we should codify it.
I would not object to changing that. It's just that in my particular peculiar case, it's a studio apartment and the rent would be so low that it would be nice to keep it for people who don't have extra money beyond what that costs.
Yeah, let me do some additional research on this, as as Virginia was talking here. In the back of my mind, I'm thinking of a scenario in the state statutes where they do count for accessory dwelling units and the timeframe may be even less than that, so let me just go back and check the statute. And come back to the commission with language on that, I think you're right, Matt, we do need to get consistency across the board here. I think the work that we did on the village housing overlay district was based on the incentive housing zone program and that may be where the thirty percent came from. But let me, let me get a handle on this affordability requirement, it should be consistent and reflect sort of the best practices, so let me see what we've got and I'll put something together. I do think that, go ahead.
I can also point out that South Commons' original affordable housing contract deed restriction was fifteen years.
Yeah, when eight thirty G got started, which was over thirty years ago, the original deed restriction there was twenty, but it's now grown to forty, so I mean, that's, it's, the numbers have been in flux for some time. I think the other request that Virginia had submitted was the concept whether currently the regulation says and you can only have an ADU, an accessory to a single family dwelling. We just discussed a modification here that says, well, you can have more than one accessory apartment in the VR district. If one of them's deed restricted. Would the commission be comfortable with basically this? That concept would allow essentially three units on a property if one of them's deed restricted. Might we also say that on a two family, you can have one accessory unit in addition to that, provided one of those is deed, one of the three is deed restricted, it's functionally the same thing.
I would say, yes, that works for me. And then that's, it's, I would say that certainly works for me and 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 does there need to be a rule that says that the owner of the premises has to live in, right now, the owner of the premises has to live in one of the two, so does the owner of the premises have to live in one of the two that are not deed restricted?
No, in my case, that might be a problem after fifteen years, as I say, I'm eighty five. And it is willed to affordable housing and do we have to find somebody? Who is the embodiment of affordable housing to live in one of the units? That's some, that's grotesque.
With that, so if, Virginia, you said it was willed to affordable housing, the whole property, correct?
That's right.
So, once it
Now, unless, unless I live to be a hundred and fifteen, in which case I need to sell the house to pay for my nursing home.
I guess where I'm going, I'm not sure that, once it hits affordable housing, do these regulations still? You know, if it was owned by affordable housing, so if everything on the property is, is affordable housing, does it still fall within this?
I think the deed.
Maybe it then moves to sixty four hundred.
It it was, it was a question for Glenn, please.
Yeah, I think the deed restricting now into a legal territory, Adam, which I don't think I'm really qualified to comment on. I think a deed restriction, if it's in effect for for time period, would continue to roll. And then there'd need to be crafted in some way, shape or form, I think Virginia might find a way to craft a restriction that the the lesser of forty years or the dedication to an affordable housing organization or something else.
Well, my will also says that if Kent affordable housing does not exist at the time of my devise, it is willed to the town and either can sell it.
You've been very thoughtful, Virginia. It's the, Adam, that's a question I can't really answer, but I think as we've talked about on the other two regulations tonight, give me a chance to start crafting something on this and then we can continue to tweak it and I think we're certainly going to want to ask that question of Mike, Ziska perhaps, is part of his opportunity to take a look at this.
I sw- again, I want to make sure that all, we're really talking about the VR one and VR two here and
Correct, I've made those notes throughout here, we're not, we're not, we're talking to VR one, VR two. Is there any modification in this table, is the commission comfortable with the concept of zoning permits? But if it's a detached, that that requires a special permit, but if it's either within the house or attached, then we'll generally do that with, with zoning permit. Except that if it's in a business, village commercial or the business hamlet, then that would be site plan approval because it's a modification to essentially a business site plan. Does this still work for you or you want to make any tweaks? Because this would be a good time.
But let me ask the balance of the commission, what's, what's the, what's the difference? Well, I'm just saying in the rural district, what's the difference between a detached dwelling unit and a detached guest house? I mean, I know what the difference is, but what's the difference? What's, what's the difference if one requires a special permit and the other, the other is a?
Informally, it is refrigerator.
I know what the difference is, but I was wondering why, why they're treated differently in the regulations.
I think the only thing I could, this is vague recollection going back to when the regulations were crafted here. A detached guest house is generally not occupied full time, it's when you have guests come, there's no kitchen in the guest house, so as a result, the guests or visitors would would stay in the guest house and come to the house for meals. On the other hand, detached dwelling unit is an independent living operation, probably occupied twenty four seven, three sixty five. So it's perhaps greater impact, so I think that was the thinking at the time, Matt, as best I could recreate it. But if the commission said, you know what? Make a zoning permit across the board, we could do that as well.
I don't mind it being a special permit.
It certainly allows us, it affords us more. You know, if Glenn is right and it's, it's, and it sounds reasonable that it's a, that it's a higher, it's a higher impacted use, higher impact use. And maybe we want, we want to continue and we just did this. So maybe it doesn't make any sense to change it, to revisit it.
And then anything down here on number six, these provisions, I think they've been here before. Separate egress from that of the principal dwelling. At least one operable door on a common wall, that's got to be for attached or within. Number four. Located to the side or if there's an addition required to the dwelling, the addition should be on the side in the rear, but not on the front towards the streets. Unless otherwise permitted by the commission by special permit, so it's generally sort of trying to maintain the street characteristics. And can't be located in a basement unless it constitutes a walkout basement or such unit is permitted by the commission by special permit. There are other provisions that were in this booklet here related to the village housing overlay zone and then also the village mixed use overlay zone. If we're in this section, was there any tweaks or changes the commission might want to make with this or stick with what we adopted before?
This is in the incentive overlay zone.
That's the work that we did, yes, Adam, so there were two parts to this, the village housing overlay zone is the field. The mixed use housing overlay zone is the Kent Green and the other areas associated with that. I think the only thing I did specifically identify for modification here is that we made the changes, if you will, the parking standards, we should definitely go ahead and fix that. But I think the other standards, I just wanted to highlight them in case the commission had anything, but if not, I think we've, we've got enough on our plate, we can just leave these intact for now.
Great, just so long, Glenn, is that that thirty five twenty one B is somewhat, which we're either conforming everything else to this thirty years, and I mean, this doesn't give us a incentive housing restriction, doesn't give us, give us the, the the AMI here, but it does give us the, does give us the the years and if we want to
I, I think this is a paraphrase, Matt, of the regulations that are existing here. I didn't carry all of them, I'm looking at them here now and it does talk about an affordability plan in accordance with eight thirty G. And I think, I thought there was language here for eighty percent of AMI for both, so I'll make sure that, yeah.
It is, it's, you're right, Glenn, it's eighty percent of AMI and thirty years, I thought that that's the note that I have.
Good. So I think the last question for the commission, our normal meeting schedule would be for us to meet in April I think it would be the twentieth, is that?
Yep, that's correct.
But that's the commission's working meeting night. So I'm not quite sure what you'll have on your agenda, we can do
The thirteenth is your regular meeting, the twentieth was held aside for like our Glenn meeting, so.
Thank you, Ty. I didn't realize I got, I got my own night. So if the commission is comfortable, what I would suggest, since we don't know what your meeting agenda, your regular business meeting is going to be like on the thirteenth, that we schedule our public input session for Thursday, April twentieth. Sound like a plan? There's two ways to do this, in person and virtual, I think the commission's become quite proficient at virtual, would that be your preference?
That would be my preference, but I know Wes has said that he's like, he likes to have, he wants to move towards in-person meetings, so I'd at least like to be his voice while he's not here.
I think if, if the commission's comfortable with virtual, we'll roll with that. And I'll work with Ty for, you know, some basic publicity about our work effort, getting the documents and the information posted on the town website, et cetera. So people have plenty of time to review it between now and April twentieth.
And Glenn, with that, so so go, getting back to the the beginning of the 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 meeting and the conversation, we are going to, in that public informational meeting, be discussing the parking, the senior living, the reasonable accommodation and the shopping center terminology. Plus, we're going to get some feedback on the, on the camp. And are we going to do the the housing in the VR one and the conservation development as well, are you going to do all of those at that meeting?
I think that what I would propose to do, if it's okay with the commission, is prepare the summary information. The handouts, working with Ty on that to make that available. My general approach for the commission would be to do a quick PowerPoint to just kind of summarize, if you will, what's happening on each one. I think if people attend the meeting and they want to read the language in more detail, that we would have it posted available on the website, so people could click out, go get the documents and come back or or some other way to facilitate public awareness and information as to what's going on. If we had an in-person meeting, we actually have copies of stuff in the room for people to to look at. But I think with a, with a virtual public session, we're going to try to get as much word out to have people be prepared beforehand. So the basic protocol would be call the meeting to order, I'll do a summary overview of the regulations, open it up for public comment. Keep track of those comments and then adjourn the meeting and we'll talk about those at a meeting in May.
Sounds like a plan.
That's my line, Matt, come on.
Sorry. So do we tie, would we, do we need a motion to that effect or can we just move forward with this discussion?
I think Ty, is that sound like reasonable, you and I'll work together to make all this, yep.
Yeah, make that happen.
All right, good. Any other discussion from the the balance of the commission?
We have to make a motion to to table the subdivision regulations. Because it's on the agenda, we talked about it, but we didn't. So I'm going to make a motion that we, because we're not going to talk about them tonight, that we're going to table that, table the subdivision regulations to a future time.
To be determined, yep, good for you, thank you.
Second.
Thanks, Adam, thanks, Daryl, any discussion? And all those in favor, so signify by raising your hand and or saying aye. Great, that's the five of us who are left, that motion carries. And then that brings us to agenda item number six, which is adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Great. Second?
Second.
Thanks, I had, I had always foregone the 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 seconding that motion, I thought that a motion was enough just to, just to a motion to adjourn and then go, but I've been told that we have to vote on it, so all those in favor. And that's all of us, all right, thanks, everybody, thanks, Virginia, for sticking it out.
Thanks, everybody, Happy Saint Patrick's Day.
I have to say, you folks do a lot of very good work and I hope that you do not consider my proposal frivolous, it is peculiar. But I think it steps in the right direction of providing more housing for people in town. But I think it steps in the right direction of providing more housing for people in town. Agreed.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night.